All right, it's five thirty. I'd like to call to order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have a roll call, please, Tammy.
Mike Hornetzer.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Paul Crews.
Here.
John Smith.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Nub Thaschbeck.
Here.
Amber Dorotko.
Here.
Jacqueline Rettler.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here. Please join me, Ryan, as you're able, facing the flag for our Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role that our elected board members serve in the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students with the highest levels of achievement. This meeting is a formal and professional event, and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Next on our agenda would be our public comment, or the first thing. Do not have any forms turned in this evening. Don't see anyone waving any out there, so let's move right on to board recognition. Tonight, the board would like to recognize the marching band. The Merrill marching band delivered an incredible performance at the state marching band competition down in Whitewater on October eighteenth. Talented musicians earned third place in Class Double A with an impressive score of eighty-four point one-six-three, setting a new all-time high score for the marching Jays. Even more exciting, the band placed fourth overall out of thirty-four competing bands from across the state. We couldn't be prouder of Director Ali Wilk and our amazing Merrill marching Jays for their dedication, teamwork, and outstanding achievement. Way to make Merrill shine, and MAPS proud. Congratulations.
Are we kidding?
Situations. One of them, let's, we'll all be banner best we can. Ali, tell us a little bit about our experience at State.
Okay. I was gonna say, our drum major has a speech prepared for you.
Perfect.
So, come on over there. So, first of all, I'll start off by saying that, you know, it was a, it was a super tremendous season. It could not be possible without, obviously, the hard work of the students. We have an amazing staff. I brought Tim with me today as well, who I consider kind of our assistant marching band director as well, just helping me through the trenches. But again, without these amazing kids, and we have our student leadership team here with us today to kind of represent. But just the whole group as a whole has really just bought into the culture of the marching band and just pushed themselves to do better and better. But I'm gonna give it to Izzy to just talk quickly about the season and maybe what it felt like at State and everything.
Yeah, I think just being at State kind of just wrapped up, just watching everybody work hard throughout the season, just with practices and band camp and all the other competitions, and then just hearing her score. I remember me, Dax, and Rob just started smiling and laughing. We were just so happy and just proud of everybody for putting in hard work over the season.
And putting a small school on the map.
Yes.
So, we have closed the gap considerably between us and schools that have like several thousand in their high schools. So, go small school districts.
All right, so as we're going through, Ron, as a additional recognition.
I hope that there was somebody here that went above and beyond, being upgraded. That's right, thanks. I got super dead.
I was joking when I was rising.
I heard you got your school bus driver.
Yeah, I became a school bus driver.
So, we really appreciate it. Have you got your little gift here? Each one of the board members donated a couple thousand dollars.
Go up and get your bus driver license, everyone.
Thank Amber and my wife did the bag. You can open that right now.
Sure, go put it. So, that is true. No, I'm not telling you one, because Steve Dieter also got his. He's in one of our meetings, guys. And there's nothing in here. Funny story. So, my first run was I usually take the hockey team to Marathon Park for practice, because at three-thirty, the bus drivers are all done, so they're sure. So, I'll run them down and come back. I've done that twice. The first time, the guys were pretty impressed to see it was me, and they asked me how long I've been doing this, and I said about a half hour. And thankfully, they didn't believe me. Oh, look at this Marie bussing. Very nice. Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
I can get a picture. And Paul's also in on this. It's three D, but not top.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
All right. At this time, I'd like to introduce our student Board of Education representatives, Parker Wagner and Eric Grunwald, for our reports from the high school activities. Take it away.
Thank you. So, starting it off, last Friday, the Raise Your Voice Club went to Highland Church in Wausa to volunteer with the program called Feed My Starving Children, where we packed meals for children in other countries that might not have a steady supply of food. Our group filled about twenty boxes that each had thirty-six bags, which contained six meals. So, that's four thousand meals from Merrill alone. And there was an entire room full of like other organizations and other groups from all over the area. And in total, that like session will be able to feed one hundred and two children for three hundred and sixty-five days, which was very cool. It was, I think it was my second year doing that, and it was just as cool the second time to like hear those numbers. And like, we fed this many children for an entire year. That's really, really cool. Some students will be attending Mini Business World in Tomahawk on December eleventh, where they will have to create a whole business and a product in one day to present to a group. This past weekend, the Theater Jays held their performance of Peter Pan. They had a school show on Thursday, opening night on Friday, and the last two on Saturday. It was definitely a show for all ages, both the cast and the audience. Peppermint is coming up soon on December sixth, and nominations for Peppermint Prince have been sent out. The nominees will have to compete for the crown at the grand march before the dance. The winner is determined by the votes of the audience. Along with that is the Holiday Band Concert on the eighth, where there are four different groups performing variety pieces, one of which includes a choir of rubber chickens, which is going to be very exciting.
Our swim team went to State in Waukesha, and they had a send-off on Friday, which included being escorted by the Merrill Fire Department. The team placed sixteenth overall out of fifty-four schools, and Marissa Miles got third place in the one-hundred meter fly and set a new school record. She also took eleventh in the one-hundred breaststroke. In addition, the two-hundred meddling relay got thirteenth, the four-hundred free relay got twelfth, and both relays included Addison Drovic, Abby Parks, Marissa Miles, and Claire Drovic. Other notable finishes were Claire Drovic, who placed fourteenth in the one-hundred free and sixteenth in the fifty free. Our winter sports have started, and games are already taking place starting this week. The final campus tour was of UW Stevens Point, and it took place today. I wasn't able to go, but the people that did go, I was talking to, said that it went pretty well. Team mental health first aid has wrapped up, and Ms. Kuchek and Ms. Grazier did a pretty good job. The blood drive posted by DECA is on December nineteenth, and we'll have more information on that later when it takes place. The staff are participating in a Meals That Matter challenge. They're making meal kits with a recipe card, a positive message, and all the necessary shelf-stable ingredients. They're donating these meals, meal kits, to struggling families in the community. Their goal is twenty bags, and if they achieve this goal, there will be no December seven AM staff meeting. I hear they're pretty pumped about that.
All right. Thanks, Parker. Eric, any board members have any questions or thoughts for the two of them? I think they did a really nice job, so thank you both for keeping us in tune with everything going on over at Merrill High School. Next on our agenda is administrative reports. I'll turn it over to Mr. Murray to guide us through that section of the agenda.
Thank you. The first item under administrative reports is the Pine River School for Young Learners report, Mr. Martinevich is here. That report has the monthly data, the enrollment numbers, et cetera. If there are any questions, we can direct those to Mr. Martinevich. Item D is the monthly food service participation report and board invites from Laura Crowsey. She is not here this evening, but she always does a nice job of updating monthly all the activities of food services. So, if there are any questions or comments, I can pass them on. Item C is Director of People's Services Special Education. Amber Luska is here this evening. She's got some information in her report about northern achievement centers and food insecurities in our district. She'd be happy to ask some of those questions. Item D is the Director of Curriculum Instruction Report, including the fall K-12 screening for ELA and math. Amanda Patterson presented that at CTP last week, and there's topics on the sheet. Amanda's not here this evening. She's out today. But I can pass on any questions or speak to that in order of their idea. Item E is the Technology Department Report. Excuse me, Andrew Kaler is here this evening. His report includes some information on the recent knowledge that we had that impacted a large part of the city of Merrill, including our district. Some information on the county PD, PDAS, CS tech directors, et cetera. And Andrew is here if there are any questions. Item F is the Director of Finance Report, which is our monthly budget update, as well as some department updates. Mark is here. I feel any questions for Mark. Item G is the Director of Human Resources Update. Heather Silver is not here this evening. She is also out today. Her updates include some field print, fingerprinting services. Is that what you're doing here? Some updates on the calendar committee and some compensation review from CISA six. We, as you shared at the HR Finance Committee the other day, we are becoming, all of our Head Start employees, all of our Head Start bus drivers need to be fingerprinted, and that service is being targeted by. And so, formerly within Merrill X and Y, Merrill's currently in Rhine Leonard. This is the board, Rhine Leonard Office is a question, which would make Green Bay the next closest location. So, we're gonna become a field print, fingerprinting service. Nick and Tracy told us that we need to take that service on for us, so we don't have to send people all over the state. Item H is the Director of Buildings and Grounds Transportation Update. Nick is here. He's had some information that he shared at different committees, facilities, and HR Finance, including update on the storm drain, some trucks and tractors that are all prepared for the snow season. It was very depressing to see all the piles lined up out there the other day, but happy to be done. So, if there's any questions for him. Item I is the DPI Report Card Review for twenty-four twenty-five. We spent a lot of time talking about that topic at CTP the other day. And again, Amanda's not here, but I can speak to that if there are any questions or forward goes on. I'll be talking in a moment about some of our planning. We look forward to address that to our report, our very questionable answers. And then Item J is the Superintendent's Report. I put a link in there about legislative updates. If you're looking for an exciting read, you can click into that. There are some things that are maybe more noteworthy than others. There is some information about a cellphone ban that came out of legislature recently, and so that goes into effect, I've given it to effect July first. Essentially, what it is, it wasn't as needy as a statement coming out of the state as many, many districts had hoped. Essentially, it would just provide some guidelines for the districts to help with their own policies. Neola, who does the bulk of our policy work, is working on a policy that they'll send us sometime in the next month or so. And then, as per usual, we'll check the boxes and apply the laws and bring the policy through. So, that's going to affect. Some other things of interest, Act Twenty-four math has been introduced, similar to Act Twenty-four ELA. That bill looks like it's gonna die for stall because there's no funding attached to it. It's a little rushed. There's some information about district consolidations, some other things that are kind of pending, we're gonna wait for. So, if you have any questions, I mean, those I'd be happy to address it, or feel free to give me a call or check in with me at any time. Also on my report, yesterday, the admin team participated in the Sale Academy, and we're working on our second hundred-day plan. As you might imagine, that entire focus was on our state report card and a sense of urgency around that. And so, we left that with some, some plannings and proposals that we're gonna bring forth. Tomorrow, we meet again, as the admin team is here, and we'll finalize those strategies. I'll have a roll up the staff very shortly after that. I'll share that with the board when that hundred-day plan is finalized. And then on Monday, I met with the Lincoln County Retired Educators Group, myself and Wyndham Quinber, the superintendent of Tomahawk, and I met with them and kind of gave an update on, they were very interested in the budget and aid and taxes and revenues and those kind of things. But we also talked about the current state of education and how things have changed since maybe they were in the profession of those kind of things. It was very nice meeting with their respected board member, Mary Hamburg, joining me as well. And so, just had a nice discussion. So, any questions on any of my report?
Thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda is committee reports. We'll start with Facilities Committee. The draft minutes were attached from our November twelfth committee meeting. Myself is chair, and other members of the Facilities Committee are available for board member questions. Do any board members have any questions in regards to our November twelfth Facilities Committee meeting? Any questions? Otherwise, we will move that down to our Finance Human Resources Committee. That draft minutes were attached for the November twelfth committee meeting there. John Smith is chair, and other members of our Finance HR Committee are available for board member questions. Do any board members have questions for our Finance HR Committee this evening? Seeing no hands raised, we'll go down to our Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee, or CTP. Draft minutes were included from that same evening, November twelfth. Ron Liberty as chair, and other members of our CTP Committee are available for board member questions. Do any board members have questions for our CTP Committee members this evening? Hearing none. We'll move down the agenda to unfinished business. Currently, we do not have anything categorized as such. Move down to Board of Education business next. I did happen to look at this. After the fact that we had it posted, I didn't think it was worthy of a repost. This time, I'd like to make a motion to amend our agenda to take up Item C before Item B this evening. So, I would make that motion if I could have a second. Second by Paul. Any discussion? I mean, the gist of that was just to do that in order, and I put them in the wrong order. So, any additional questions on that? Otherwise, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Motion carries. Moving on with the first item of Board of Education business is the Annual Self-Assessment Plan Process and Timeline with the Topic Summary Sheet provided by Ryan Martinevich. There is a recommended motion. Any board members willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Mike?
Motion to approve the annual self-assessment plan process and timeline as presented.
Motion by Mike. We have a second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on this agenda item or that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, I will go to, as approved, Item C, Review and Approval of Updated Fund Forty-Six Projects. The topic summary sheet was provided by Mark Paul, and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Any board member willing to make a motion on this topic this evening?
Are you in C now?
I am in C now, yes. One forty-six. Paul?
I'm going to approve the capital project list for one forty, equipment list for one forty-six.
Good. Motion by Paul. Do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions in regards to the motion or this agenda item? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, the item, next item on our agenda is purchase of the District Utility Task Vehicle, or UTV. A topic summary sheet was updated by Nick Wazalik since our Facilities and Finance HR Committee meeting. There is a recommended motion. Do we have any board member willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Nubs?
I'm going to approve the purchase of a Tabor that uses UTV. It's in Fund Forty-Six.
Motion by Nubs. Do we have a second? Second by Mike. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or agenda item? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Education for Employment Academic and Career Planning Plan Approval. Topic summary sheet was provided by Amanda Patterson and Amber Luska, and we had a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Ron?
Motion to adopt the Education for Employment Academic and Career Plan for the twenty-two five, twenty-two six school year.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mike. Any discussion or questions in regards to that motion or this agenda item? Any questions or discussion on this motion or agenda item? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice float. Next item on our agenda is, in fact, our consent agenda. I would ask at this time if anyone would like any items pulled to be handled independently from the consent agenda? Otherwise, at this time, I would ask if someone is willing to make a motion for the consent agenda. Ron?
Motion to approve consent agenda items A through E, which includes minutes of the September twenty-four, twenty-two five meeting, second reading and approval of policy three-one-two-zero-point-zero-four, employment of substitutes, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling three million, three-hundred-ninety-five-thousand, seven-hundred-ninety-seven dollars and eighty-two cents, donations totaling seven thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, and the attached personnel report, petition upon release for contract for hiring, and upon the satisfaction of the appropriate liquidated damage for resignations.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Paul. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Should be no abstentions. Motion carries accordingly. Yes?
I think you said this something. In that motion, it said September twenty-four minutes approval. It should be October one second.
Sounds good. Can we have a friendly amendment by Ron clarifying that?
I will. Friendly amendment has to change to September to October.
And then Paul had the second.
Second.
All right. So, let's go back on that amendment. This amended motion, all those in favor of that amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Tammy. Appreciate that. Items for future meetings. This is that time on our agenda. Any board members have anything they'd like to attach to our running list of requested items that we're keeping our eyes on going forward, and possibly for next committee meeting or regular board meeting? If any board members have anything in addition to what we've talked about already at committees or recent?
Kevin, can I speak to one?
Go ahead.
So, we spoke at HR Finance about the local effects of Washington DC federal government shutdowns on older school districts, and so Dax tried to give it up because the impact was not on, unless you could get a formal report.
The only thing that I would ask, is there any chance that this happens again in January, February, where we need to keep our eyes open on that?
I would agree.
I mean, so.
But, I mean, the last shutdown didn't affect us at all. The only thing that really they talked about was possibly food service reimbursements at that point.
Sure.
But everything else has been coming through, because a lot of it is already set for allocation. The state has it, and so they do allow the reimbursement. They're not waiting for the Fed to give it to them. So, I don't anticipate any major issues going forward, but stranger things have happened.
Fair enough. So, we will just, we will keep, we can take that off of the list, but we'll note the importance if it was asked to be monitored and reported. So, something of that nature happens, so it'll be back on there quickly for an update. All right. Any board members have any additional items? They want to make sure that we are reviewing at future meetings, either committees or regular board meeting? Hearing none. We'll move on. Just a reminder, Thursdays, we are on the radio schedule program, eight fifteen AM, Blue Jay, seven thirty radio. Tomorrow is no different. Shannon and I will go through tonight's agenda and what was all happening here at the board meeting. Future meetings, Bridges Virtual Academy Governance Board meets next on Thursday, November twentieth, twelve forty-five virtually. Calendar Advisory Committee meets Tuesday, December second, three forty-five PM here in the boardroom. They also meet Tuesday, December seventh, three forty-five PM in the boardroom. Head Start Policy Council meets on Tuesday, December ninth, five thirty PM out at Pine River School for Young Learners. Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee next meets on Wednesday, December tenth, four thirty PM here in the boardroom, followed by our Finance Human Resources Committee, same date, Wednesday, December tenth, no sooner than five PM here in the boardroom. Safety Committee meeting is Monday, December fifteenth, twelve thirty PM in the boardroom. We have had some discussions after that of putting that in the agenda with facilities, so stay tuned on that. Calendar Advisory Committee meeting also for Monday, December fifteenth, three forty-five PM in the boardroom. Our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting is slated for Wednesday, December fifteenth, five thirty PM here in the boardroom. Seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Ah-ha. December seventeenth. That would make sense, if Monday, the fifteenth, for the calendar committee. Thank you. Next, I have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section nineteen point eight-five, Part N one, Part N C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of a public compensation, or performance evaluation data of a public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and Part N F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except for Part N B applies, which, discussed in public, be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigation. Purpose of the closed session is for consideration of and possible action regarding an employee's personal time off. Do I have that motion? Paul, you're excused. We have a motion by John Smith. Do we have a second? Second by Mike. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Mike Cornsher.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Aye.
Paul Crew. John Smith.
Aye.
Brett Waller.
Aye.
Nub Dashbeck.
Aye.
Amber DeRosa.
Aye.
Jaclyn Crowler.
Aye.
Kevin Lewis.
So at this time, we will thank everyone for their attendance. We may come back into open session if applicable, otherwise, thank you.